Okay. So then hold up the screen. And I say share screen. So share screen. And then I click on it. You might click on that little video. It's, um, it has an echo. It has an echo. My computer's at zero. My computer's at zero. Or it's an X. Or it's an X. Oh.
We have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Cozart?
Here.
Commissioner Marano? I. Commissioner Rouse?
Yes.
Rachel Sullivan's absent. Sheriff Baffra.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Um, Elizabeth Panotti spoke. And she commented on the renting out of decks in Fiddletown, and I think we should elaborate on that because what she was, she was trying to make the planning commission aware that that's something that happens elsewhere. We may want to take that into account in our language that we adopted. So if we could elaborate on that, so it's clear what she was talking about, because otherwise it just doesn't make sense. And then, um, under the motion that I made, um, this, the sentence that starts, if that is not legally allowed, again, if we could clarify, if that is not legally allowed because the planning commission has not held its own public hearing comma, then it would come back to the planning commission, because that was the issue, we had not held our own public hearing.
Yeah, it's true.
And so I'd like to make a motion to make those corrections to the minutes.
Dana, do you need her to repeat that one more time?
No.
Okay.
I'm good on that, but I was advised that I needed to keep the word ordinance there because that is how it was presented in the beginning and or initially presented and that I could change it in the, um, in the motion. But we made a motion at the last meeting to change the agenda. Okay, to change it, it's in your, the item two, it says to change it from ordinance to regulations. So that was the place that we changed it. So it is consistent. All right, okay, thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the meeting prior meeting minutes as amended?
I make a motion, we approve it.
The second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
All right, Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno? Yes. Commissioner Rouse?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sullivan's absent. Chair Clapham.
Yes, yes. All right, we will move on to item six point one, uh, the official public hearing section to adopt a resolution of the planning commission, two thousand twenty-one oh two of the City of Plymouth to make a recommendation to the city council to adopt the amendments to title nineteen of the municipal code, adding chapter nineteen point nine zero, short-term rentals. Uh, first, we'll go ahead and, um, do we need to summarize or do we just open it up for public hearing at this point? Since we've gone through it several times.
So when I'm, I'll just summarize kind of the process to make sure that we're all aware.
Okay.
That's okay.
Great.
So, but you said, we've gone, we've gone through this a few times, starting in spring of this year with just the city council and then a few rounds here at the planning commission, uh, reviewing different regulations for different cities, tailoring them and molding it into draft regulations for our city. So a public hearing notice went out for this item. It was published in our, in the newspaper of local circulation, which is the Ledger. I think it ran twice, two weeks, uh, notices were posted, um, in the spots within the city that they are required to be posted. So those requirements were met, attached, uh, is the resolution. So for this, for the planning commission to recommend a zoning ordinance amendment to the city council, they have to adopt a resolution, so that resolution is here in front of you tonight. And also the draft resolution, which will go to the city council. So if the commission is satisfied with the draft, draft resolution, they would, they would take public, um, comment during a public hearing portion of the agenda, uh, discussion and then adopt the resolution and, uh, with the attached ordinance. If there's any changes to the ordinance, you know, minor changes that we, that the commission feels need to be made before it goes to the city council, those changes can go to this, to, uh, to the city council. So we don't have to come back unless there's something very big that we still are, um, being discussed. There is one thing in the ordinance, well, not in the ordinance, that, um, still needs to go into the ordinance, and that is that five percent limit. Um, in reviewing what other jurisdictions did with that, there, um, there was more to it than just adding that cap, it's then creating the waiting list, the, uh, the evaluation, how we would pull from that waiting list if it was different than, um, just chronological order or what someone needed to do to keep their permit valid. Do you just have to have a permit? Do you have to have a permit and show you rented it out a certain number of days? So that's why that is not in there, but if there is a spot for it under nineteen point zero, nineteen point nine zero point zero three zero, it would be J. The total number of permits, no more than five percent of the total number of residential units can be registered as short-term rentals. So we couldn't add that, um, that language in there if needed, if we, if the commission still feels that that's appropriate to have it there, so. I can answer any questions about the standard ordinance, um, or resolution and.
All right, we'll take a comment and we'll open up for public comment.
If I can talk about process.
Yes.
Um, I have a lot of questions and changes because there's a lot in the ordinance that we didn't discuss. Um, so I wanted to talk about those, but I'm wondering if we take public comment and then I make my comments and the, the commission agrees to change something, then the public hasn't an opportunity to comment on that change, so I don't know how that process might work.
Maybe we could take public comment, discuss, see if there's any additional commentary and then move forward, does that sound good?
Thank you.
Sound good?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, so first, uh, let's take a public comment either in person or on the Zoom meeting. Anybody on Zoom or in person would like to discuss the top? Any attendees on Zoom?
Not at this time.
All right. It's like our in-person audience here may be here for another topic. Excellent, so just one more call Zoom or in person. All right, let's go ahead and open it up for discussion. Let's, um, Commissioner Moreno, let's get some comments, let's start there.
Yes.
We're gonna work our way down.
Um, I have comments on both the ordinance and the resolution. We want to start with the ordinance. Um, getting to bottom of page one, it talks about the operator being the person who is a legal owner, a person who has a legal right to possession, or any manager, agent, representative, or similar person acting as a authority or at the direction of the owner, other operator. Um, I think that's really loose. It means that somebody could come in, rent a house from a property owner, turn it into an Airbnb and the property owner may not even be aware that that's happening. Um, or it could be that a renter, um, uh, sublets or uses some of the rooms to supplement rental as the Airbnb. I think that the permit, I mean, typically, um, when people get permits, um, they are either the property owner or the property owner has to sign off on the permit application, is that correct, Erin?
Yes.
Um, and I think that, um, I'd like the commission to consider in order, especially since this is a new regulation that we're doing, that it be limited to, um, the, um, operators, the personal. It doesn't have to be the term operator, could be that the permit holder is the legal owner. So would, would striking two work? Two and three. Because I don't think, uh, property managers should be the one operating the B and B either. They could manage the operations, but they wouldn't hold the permit, and this makes it sound like they would hold the permit.
Worst of, I guess we probably have to look and see where the reference to the operator is in the, in the article.
So this is the definition of it, but it appears throughout the, um, ordinance, is operator. And so I, I was just concerned about that.
Yeah, no, it's a good question.
If you took out the, um, the person who has a legal right to possession and any manager agent representative and just said, you don't even need the word operator, you just say permit holder, the permit, right? If the owner is the only person that can, you could leave operator in there and just say the permit has to be in the name of the property.
There you go.
You could do that.
Could we do that, like, just under the permit section? Like, what's required for a permit is to add that the legal owner must be a permit holder?
I mean, the commission can recommend what they would like. I think where we, where there may be a gray area is that the owner does not have to be the manager, and so to give that authority then to that person too. So how do we, how do we give that authority to both the owner and the manager or the local contact person?
So if someone comes in, gets a use permit to operate a wine tasting room inside of somebody else's, um, building, the owner holds the, or has to sign off on the use permit. Use permit is in the name of the business owner, right? Um, you could do it that way, or you could just say that the permit holder has to be the owner of the property and they can assign operations. The operator can be any person that that person designates, and then the operator is responsible for all the other stuff. And it could be the owner as well. I'm just concerned at the beginning of trying to establish regulations that property owners wouldn't know what was happening with their homes. Theoretically.
Question.
It seems like two just came out, because I think that would eliminate anyone who rents a house because they are legally have the right to possess the short-term rental as a tenant.
Well, it's not short-term, it's long-term rental.
I think they're. But as a, of a short-term rental, so if they're renting their house, if they are, a person is a tenant renting a house, they then cannot turn around and, and short-term rent the house to rent, uh, the insurance or whatever. So I think striking two.
Yeah, because then you still have the owner or the manager or agent or representative acting as the operator.
So then it would just be a matter of requiring the property owner to sign the application as well. So we can put that in the, um, application process.
Yeah, the application requirement.
Uh, operator needs contact information.
Have a operator name and owner name and or owner name.
Okay. So let's strike two.
I brought my red pen because I, you knew I.
The red pen.
Okay.
Um, that's a good change.
So, um, the next item is under nineteen point nine oh point oh three oh on the second page. Um, it seems like it would be easier within the municipal code if we didn't start naming use permits different names. Um, because I noticed you have under the mobile vendor, a mobile vendor use permit. Now you have a short-term rental use permit. Couldn't we just call them administrative use permits? And they would be governed by these codes, but they could still be called administrative use permit rather than renaming the permit itself.
And that was a discussion I had with the city attorney when drafting this, telling him, how do, how do we do that? Because the process is pretty, is going to be the same. It's an administrative level permit. And so where, where do we, you know, in parentheses, say administrative use permit and, or however? So we can figure out how to get that in there.
Well, it's just like in the rest of your zoning code in your matrix, you have when an administrative use permit is required for certain businesses or when a conditional use permit is required. So in your matrix, your short-term rental would say that it requires administrative use permit, right? In residential neighborhoods and in commercial neighborhoods, it would require the use permit. Is that how it worked out or however it did? Um, and so it seems to me it still could be administrative use permit required, but what, the conditions you put in there are governed by this ordinance.
So I think the way to do that is just strike the word use from it all. So it'd just be a short-term rental permit. And then under the matrix, it would be administrative. Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I, it, it just having all these different names for use permits means that when you start doing the analysis, you have to do, you know, separate names for all the different fees that you have instead of just saying administrative use permit costs this much money.
In our discussion before, we were, the fees for this were different than an administrative use permit. Okay, so is that one of the reasons why it's a different? That was another reason, um, and that, um, probably something we may be looking at because everything now is cost recovery and it's, it's often hard to then chase someone down for that extra one, one hundred dollars. You know, they have their permit, they're on their way and we don't recover our costs.
That's not a deal point for me, so, okay, however, we guys want to do that. Um, under, on the next page, there's no page numbers on this. For page top, number three. Um, the rental unit type and number of total bedrooms. It's not the number of total bedrooms in the rental unit, it's the number of total bedrooms available for rental in the unit, right? Because we talked about if the person is, has, say, two units on their property and they live in one of the houses, um, that it's only the bedrooms in the other unit. So, um, just saying that, that it was, that they would indicate the number of total bedrooms available for rental.
Our thought along this was that we still want to know how many bedrooms are in the house, even though if you have a four-bedroom house, only two are for rent, but we would still need to know that there's four bedrooms.
Okay, but then you need to include that in there because you only have just number of bedrooms. So you could put the total number of bedrooms and the total number that will be limited for rental.
Rental, rental unit type and number of total bedrooms in rental and then I, they, um.
And the number that they intend to rent. Because you're gonna put that in the, in the use permit, right?
Yeah.
So if it's a four-bedroom house and there's two people living in two bedrooms, they only have two bedrooms, they're, they're only getting a permit for those two bedrooms. Is that correct? They don't get a permit for the whole house.
Yes, and that, and in, on that note, the five percent, we're back, I was circling back on that today. If you get a permit, if you have two bedrooms you rent out separately, that's two permits towards our twenty.
No, it should only be one permit, one administrative use permit, and it regulates some of the maximum number of bedrooms that we rent. You don't need a separate permit for each bedroom.
Yeah, I think it'd be the unit, right, the rental unit.
What if you're renting the units out separately?
It, it, it just happens a condition in use permits.
Yeah, because the permits approving the, I, I think, I'm not sure, the use of the actual dwelling. They can choose to rent each bedroom separately if they wanted to do that. We're approving that they can do that. I, that was my interpretation.
That, that, that was something the city attorney and I were talking about, it, um, that percentage. Is it number of permits?
This, it was number dwellings. The percentage has to do with, we want to make sure that there's still housing stock rental and purchase for people to live in, right?
Percent of dwelling units.
Yeah, percent of residential dwelling units. Because I think we talked about there's, what, four hundred and fifty? Well, there's four hundred and fifty approximately water with us, residential water, so I'm assuming there's that many residential units.
So I think it, in this case, it may be appropriate to just have total bedrooms because they could choose to rent out four.
So here's my block, trying to make it easier for yous to rent. So say you're a family, um, that, so when I rented an Airbnb, for example, it was with a, a, a family lived there, they had, um, it was a separated room that was attached to the house. And they had four bedrooms and I was in a little one that was on the side. Um, that's the only one you want to rent. The conditions that, that Aaron might want to put on a use permit are gonna be greater if you're gonna have five units being rented conceivably than one unit because you're gonna have more cars, you're gonna have more traffic, you're gonna have more trash. You're gonna need, um, to have more, make sure that there are rent, uh, carbon monoxide alarms and all those things. You're not gonna be inspecting the rest of the house, you're only gonna be inspecting the piece of the house that's gonna be rented, right?
That's a good question.
So one of the other things is, um, in these ordinance, it says if you're submitting information that's inconsistent with the records that the city has on file, then we will look into that. So I think that's, yeah, so we need to then, that's, that's one of the reasons why we need to see total number of bedrooms in the house. So I think we just add, um, identified that.
How many you're gonna rent.
Are gonna be available for rent. How I'm envisioning reviewing this permit, if someone's gonna bring me a floor plan of their house, it can be a simple sketched-out floor plan, and it's gonna be bedroom one, bedroom two, three, four, we're renting bedroom one and two. Okay, there we go, you know, because that, that's kind of how I envision this process going, so.
Right, and then the use permit would say that they have the right to rent two rooms.
Yes.
Okay, that's what, how I, I'm.
There you go, yeah, so just add.
Number.
Just one.
Yeah, that's good.
A number of total bedrooms in the rental unit and number of, uh, bedrooms, uh, available for rent.
Right.
Yeah, there you go.
So then if they have two and they have five in the house and they're renting two, but you notice or the code enforcement officer noticed that there's consistently like six vehicles, you know, always parked out there, then you may want to say, are you renting more than two? Because then we need to have maybe higher conditions on that. Because then we need to have maybe higher conditions on hand use, so it's not effective. Okay, okay. Um, it looks like four and six have a little bit of redundancy, so I just wondered, and this again is not a point, just if they could we. Combine together.
Yeah, so we'll just.
I wasn't really sure what eight meant. Such further information is made be required to enable proper administration of the short term rental use permit in this chapter. Do you have any examples of what that information might be?
Um, I don't have an example. I don't have an example, but it just it's there to protect the city to be able to require a request for more additional information as needed.
Okay. And then um under age transferability. Um, so in light of the fact that we said that the property owner is going to be a permit holder. Or acquire. Um, that the the use permit would be transferred with the property, not with the operators. Right?
So this is where the city attorney was coming in for the legal portion of it, and his concern was with transferability. How how to enforce that it is still be it would be transferred to someone who could get this permit. And he didn't want permits to also be able to be transferred. You know, like a uh for an example, an ABC license that can be transferred from business. To business, a different location to a different location.
Right, but we talked about it being just like any other use permit that's transferable between businesses, but why would you need to know if the person is eligible? There's no personal. Personal piece of this.
There is, operators that have lost their permits, if they tried to get a permit from. Transfer from somebody else, we wouldn't want to issue them another permit because they have not been able to operate.
But the permit runs with the house, with the property. The transferability is just with that piece of property, not between, it's not like an ABC license, you can't sell it to another location.
So I think this is this just saying that it can be transferred to another person.
It can be, as long as that person can also meet the requirements of the original person, the original. So if it's sold from one, if a property is sold. From one person to another, that person can have that permit, they need to also be able to meet the requirements originally. Required in a permit. So they would need to fill out the application and bring that information in, show us their contact information that. You know, they would go through the whole application process again.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point, so they would need to essentially. Update the application information.
Yes.
And it could be.
But they can't say, well, I don't, I don't like you because you're a single person instead of a married person, so you can't transfer this. That's why I don't want to give any kind of impression that it's something about the person. Or that you've done a background check on her, and you don't think that they should have this kind of business, we're not going to be doing any.
I think it's, and this is just saying, as long as the. Operator meets the same criteria that the original.
But but that was my point, the operator doesn't meet the criteria, the property does.
So that was that, that was the issue that the city attorney brought up. Operator A mismanages his property and gets his permit pulled and is like, well, I want. Still do this, I'm going to go buy. One, two, three Main Street that has a short term rental use permit. And then it transfers to him, even though he just lost his use permit for his original rental, because he didn't. Follow the rules or regulations, so that was the, that's why.
But you have that covered elsewhere in here, that you said if you lose it, you're not eligible to get one for twelve months.
So, but if you buy a house with that already has one and it transfers to you automatically.
Okay, so could we at least, so so the short the short term rental permit may be transferred to. A subsequent owner of the property, I again, it should be the. I think that it should go with the ownership of the property, not just a separate operator, but. Um, I don't like the subject to approval by the planning director, because it makes it sound like it could be personal. It's just provided that such third party transferring meets the requirements of the section. So as long as that person meets the requirements of this section, right? So I think the subject to approval by the planning director should come out, that makes it sound more personal. Like the planning director has to decide if that person's qualified.
So but the planning director is the one who processes the administrative use permit and this process, so. That that's, that's why it says that.
But but you make that determination based on whether or not they meet the requirements of the code, and that's already in here. So you have the authority, it says may be transferred, provided that they need the requirements of the session. You're the enforcement person for the requirements of the session that's already in here, it's just this term subject to approval by planning director. Makes it feel personal to me.
I don't think it matters either way, because it's inferred that it's going to be approved by the planning director, so whether you state it or infer it, it's. It's essentially the same language. Because I think we have other language where it says. The use permit will be approved by the planning director according to this this outline of the code.
It's just where the subject to approval is in the.
But it is subject to approval, like. The the planning director has to approve the.
You could put, provided that such third party transferring meets the requirements of the section as determined by the planning director. I mean, it's where it lands in the sentence is what my, but again, it's up to you guys.
Oh, see, yeah, so.
Saying where where.
So if it just be like, uh, maybe transferred to another operator, provided that such third party transferring meets the requirements of the section.
As determined by the planner.
And and uh and is subject to approval by the planning director, just move that section to the end.
It makes it.
Because, yeah, because then you're 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 thinking maybe somebody may tie that to the word operator, you're not really. Yeah, the ice cream, yeah. So like, just take the subject to approval by the planning director and put it at the end.
And then I I I do think you need to put J in that no more than five percent of the um. The units, the residential units in town. I think that needs to be in here, we were all pretty unanimous on there need to be a cap.
Yeah, I think that's that was. That was kind of a consensus consensus in the past. So add J back in, which would be five percent.
I'm just going to read you what I have, so uh no more than five percent of the total number of residential. Units within the city can be registered as short term rentals.
Yes.
Yes.
So on the bottom on the next page. Um, again, it's just um. There's two things in this visible address. Um, I just wondered what your thinking was on this, so it says each year term rental shall have an address identification. The address identification shall be legible and placed in a position that's visible from the street or road front of the property, that's fine. But then it says when it's not going to be visible, it shall also be placed at the public street. Or access road in a manner which is clearly visible, that sounds to me like we're going to be putting addresses on street corners. Which should be confusing for possibly emergency responders or other people that are looking for addresses. Do we really need them? I mean, you're saying that they have to have it visible from the street and just leave it at the end of that period? And then on a case by case basis, if you say that they can't see where it is, then you can put a condition on there, but. But having it placed at the public street or access road is.
I think this is actually um. So I I think I know of another situation in the in the city where. The house was offset from the street, and so they did have to place the street number on the street, the physical street.
The house was offset, and you could have multiple house, and we do have multiple houses on private driveways in town, they're not streets.
But you would have to place the street number at the public street, right?
Right, so that could be by.
The authorities would know where to.
It'd be a hundred yards from the house.
It could be, yes, it certainly could.
That to me would be confusing for emergency responders or um other people that are trying to find houses.
Yeah, I think, well, I think what this is interpreted as, and if others have comments, so. If a house, say there's two houses on one property. One is a budding the street, so you have a street number, and then one is offset a hundred yards back. That second one offset needs to have the street numbers at the public street, just from an emergency standpoint.
I understand that if the house is on the public street, it's when they're off of private driveways that it's an issue. If they're on private roads, we have some in this town, right? So then you're going to say that they have to put their street address out on the public road a ways away from their house.
Correct, that's where the hotel, the emergency personnel would know to get to the house.
Or the people trying to find the house that are renting it.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't know what, why there would be an issue with that.
Because you're going to, they're going to see the address out here and they're going to think it's this house. If I put, if you put your address out here and your house is way back here and there's three houses in front of it, why would that not be confusing? They're going to.
I just think of mailboxes or like that, I don't know, like. If you Google it, it'll probably take you to that, I don't know. I I I welcome any comment, I just don't know what that, why that would be.
Um, and then under um the last sentence, a short term rental in a condominium building. It does not have an individual address, may utilize a condominium building address and shall clearly identify each unit number. And to me, that's putting a burden on all the other owners in the condominium building, why does each owner have to have a unit number on their place? Because one person has a short term rental. Is that a typo?
No, I I think this is just saying you need to have a the unit on the door or something.
Right, but it says each each unit number has to be identified, so if you have. If you have eight condos and only one's a short term rental, it's requiring the owner of the condominium to make sure that there's you. They probably already do, but make sure there's unit numbers on each individual.
Did this come from like another? Code or something?
Yeah.
Because it looks like it's probably just a typical code.
Yes, yeah.
So I'm not sure if we would want, if it's if it's a common municipal code, we would we want to change it just for this purpose, you know?
Okay, it's.
I, but I just don't know if there's other.
I just hate colors that have words in them that aren't confusing necessarily, okay, so the next one's a big one now, this is a. So it says prohibitions, special events, wedding, corporate events, commercial functions and other similar events are prohibited from occurring. At a short term rental without issuing a temporary use permit. This is not a prohibition, this is saying that there is a conditional use allowing special events. Because it's saying that if you come get a temporary use permit, you can have a wedding, corporate event or commercial function or other similar event. So it's not a prohibition. And we didn't talk about this at all, and I I'm absolutely opposed to these Airbnbs. Holding commercial functions in them, that, these are residential neighborhoods that we're talking about. If they want to do that, I think they should get a conditional use permit to offer the commercially uses rather than a temporary use permit. I and and if you think weddings are not controversial, you should be up in the shando about it during middle of the wedding. They're very divisive among neighbors, so um I'm just suggesting that it that it. It's not a prohibition, because you're unless you want to say that they're not allowed, there may be, if you're having a wedding with five people, maybe it's okay. But I think it should be a conditional use permit for those kinds of commercial functions in a residential neighborhood. Because that could really cause problems with the neighbors.
Do we have any precedent for that?
So um. We, the city manager and I have talked about this a lot, because we've had um some larger events occur at. Some short term rentals within the city, and so how do we balance that with our residents, our streets, our public safety? With a temporary use permit, we then know the date, the time. That it's occurring, with a conditional use permit, if we're if we're doing how I think you would typically do it, say you are allowed. To do this, um, and the city wouldn't have, right, the wouldn't be able to regulate the individual events.
Issue could, on a conditional use permit, you can put whatever conditions you want in there. So you could say you're allowed to have two weddings a year, and you have to notify the city ten days in advance so they can notify the neighbors.
Yeah, so that we could put like a.
But a temporary use permit is implies that there's no impact to the neighbors, um, it's. Um, you're you're already doing an exemption for CECL for this ordinance. And then a temporary use permit, you're going to do an exemption from CECL as well. Whereas a conditional use permit would at least have to be a negative DAP or. Um, with conditions on it, so that. You know, some of the par properties could really have a a very loud event, or they could be offering. You know, team building exercises or whatever it is that that are causing neighborhood. Concerns, and so I just, I think it should be taken up to beyond a temporary use permit.
So I think if it goes to conditional use permit and the additional CECL is required, I don't know that we would issue, there would be anyone who would issue a good.
Well, no, it's not, it's just, I'm just saying, it's a a negative DAP doesn't take much, we would do a negative DAP. On a conditional use permit, if you have conditions, so your conditions mitigate any potential environmental hazards.
So what what does it take to do a temporary use, I don't I don't know what that uh. Like what what does somebody, does that have to, somebody have to qualify for that or?
So it's an administrative process, they would submit information required for temporary use permit and review it. Um, during that, Rex and I were talking about this, so what we, you know, we would see, okay, I have a temporary use permit for an event on this date. If I got a month later a temporary use permit for an event also on that date in the same area, what would I, you know? We would have to have different conditions, we talked about what those, what are the big impacts, so it's parking. The ability to get through the streets if there's lots of um cars, if it's an event that large, so.
Big noises, yes.
So a condition that we would put in is that they had to use like a valet service, you know, find a a parking lot. Offsite parking.
Or have no uh noise, music stopped.
The problem is there's no notification to the neighbors that there's going to be a wedding going on. Because a temporary use permit, they don't notify anybody. A conditional use permit, there's a public process, it has to come to the planning commission, the commission approves it. The neighbors can come in and voice objections to having special events at that location.
How does, how do we do that? Because there's a lot of places that have weddings, how does that, how does it handle the day?
Well, those are o- outside of our jurisdiction.
Oh, so most, we don't have them in.
If you have your own wedding.
Like you could have wedding your own.
You can have a friend marry, yeah, it's if you're doing it properly.
I I don't, I don't know that that, I don't know that that event is any different, but um. So, yeah, I mean, this is, this was a big, a big thing, a big discussion in trying to figure out the best way to regulate them. The city has a noise ordinance.
That doesn't work.
That doesn't.
So um what, I I mean, you could, we could change it since you're changing how the use permits work. So that um special events require ten day prior notice. That one is about to be issued to the neighbor, so they can request that it be heard or appeal it. I just, I, this is a big deal, and I don't think that neighbors should just find out on the day of a wedding that there's been. Approval given for, you know, a hundred people to show up next door.
Um, could you, so. It sounds like a conditional use permit is much more onerous.
It is.
And expensive.
Public comes, uh, public hearing comes to the planning commission, um. So it's months months in advance.
Who who's offering, who's offering these kind of things in town now, are they? Airbnb's that are paying TOT tax?
I don't think they do today, I, this is probably just a caveat to control it if any event was.
We've had some large scale events, yeah.
I mean, these, they have hotels, they have event centers, they have commercial areas that are better suited for these kinds of things. Um, I ju- I just don't feel they should be happening in the neighborhood.
So I think we just say they're prohibited.
Prohibited.
Yeah, there you go.
Period, after rental, yeah.
And I think that's fair, because the intent is not to be a uh a functional center, it's, and then they, that would be a different business license if they chose to. Operate that as a wedding event center. There you go.
Thank you, so special events, good weddings, corporate events, commercial functions and any other similar events are prohibited from occurring at a short term rental property.
Right there, yeah.
Have the ones that have happened here been a problem? Without naming names. Um, without naming names, just. The city hears about them, okay, they don't, they don't let notice, okay.
I think that's good, yeah, cause it's not, this isn't a, a place intended to be a place for a party, yeah.
Okay.
Good, a good idea.
And then, um, my last, um, thing is nineteen point nine oh point oh seven oh appeals. Um, again, this, this personal aspect of things, according to the code. Um. Appeals go to the planning commission of the planning, uh, director's uh, determination. So, um, nineteen point oh four point one six oh. So if the planning director makes a determination and somebody wants to appeal, it comes to the planning commission, not to a hearing officer. Um, and I would prefer to have that a standard process, um, having the city manager designate. Who they want to be a hearing officer can make it very personal. I'm saying it will, but it could. Instead of just saying that if there's an appeal, somebody's had. A denial of their permit or revocation of their permit, the normal process is to come to the planning commission, I think we should stick with that whole process. Or built into the code.
Which, which section is this?
Nineteen point oh, oh, the one I'm looking at is nineteen point nine oh point oh seven oh. But the municipal code is nineteen point oh four point one six oh, plus that how appeals.
Was the intent to make these hearings public or not?
It would not be public.
But if it came before the planning commission, it would.
It would be then. So those are the things on that.
Yeah, um, I just, I had some very, very, uh, well, let's go with, Mel, go ahead, any Mel, any changes, Mel?
I don't, I have any questions in regard to this, I. Been trying to get caught up on, and I'm not familiar with the activity of. This type of operation, I've been involved in a couple of others. In my time being, but uh, sounds like you've got it covered pretty good, thank you.
Thanks, sir, Jason, anything else? No, no comments. All right, I just had two, that'd be minors, a couple of minor, minor, minor things, but it's um. Nineteen nine oh dot oh three oh, section A, there's, there just needs to be a space between parcel and in.
Yeah.
And.
I'm sorry, where, where is that again?
Uh, nineteen dot nine oh dot oh three oh, section A. About the.
Oh, parcel then, yeah.
Um, section F in the same si- same area, nineteen nine oh oh three oh, F one. Let me see, I, I put operator and or. Owner name and contact information, but I think that may be covered in the definition of operator.
Okay, what I, what I had added there from our discussion is uh, operator name and contact information and owner signature.
Oh, there, yes.
Like we have in our other applications, we have an agent, we have property owner information, agent information, and then, um. Organization for an agent tag or property.
Right on, and then the next page, section G, a space uh, between shall and expire. And that was it, oh wait. Um, nineteen nine oh oh six oh. For section four, F four. Ben and issue, just a space between Ben and issue. In the first sentence. That was it. All right, so. If somebody would like to make a motion and just kind of briefly summarize the, some of those changes. We'll go for a second.
And then, um, and then I do have changes on the resolution. Um, so I make a motion that the um, draft. Ordinance, is that what we're calling this? Yeah. Is it draft ordinance or draft municipal code? Cause we're not actually approving it, we're just writing it, right? Sub ordinance, the draft ordinance, okay, make a motion that the draft ordinance, um. Be approved subject to following changes on page one. Under operator, be clarified, um, no, I, item two will be taken out. And it'd be, you have clarification on owner. On page two. Um, title will be fixed under nineteen point nine oh point oh three oh A. Those are just, when it. I don't need to say those, okay. Into PDF, they like sometimes.
I figured it sometime.
So I don't need to say all that. Yeah, and that, we'll, we'll make sure, when it gets actually put into the code. Okay. So, yeah, thank you. Um, item nineteen nine oh point oh three oh F, item one would um, add an owner's signature. Um, item nineteen point nine oh point oh three oh F three would add the number of. Uh, units available for rental. Items four and six will be consolidated in that same section. Item J would be added, um, so that there'd be no more than five percent of, um. Residential dwelling units. You, uh, an H, subject to. Oh, H, I'm sure it goes to the end. Subject to approval by client, it goes to the end, thank you, or J, J would be no more than five percent. Nineteen point nine oh point oh five oh provisions, um, the sentence would end. That the, are prohibited from occurring in a short-term rental property. Words without issuance of a temporary use permit be stripped in. Under nineteen point nine oh point oh seven oh appeals, um, it would just refer back to appeals would be handled. By the section nineteen point oh four point one six oh. Um, and that would be striking A through D. I think that was all of it?
I think that's, it's a nice job.
Do we want those hearings to be public?
Yeah, so that was the only one, I didn't feel like I got a consensus from the commission about making that change.
Because I, I would think that the operators would prefer them not be public.
So this is, this is somebody that's come in for an application to operate, and they've been denied. Or they had an, a one and it got revoked. Um. I, I think the public should have an opportunity to comment. On that, but. I, I just don't like the idea of a hearing officer doing it. I mean, if you wanna say the chairman of the planning commission.
They could be appointed as the hearing officer.
But I don't think the city manager should just be able to get a pick whoever they want to be hearing officer, just, I don't think there's any internal control in that.
So maybe a member of the planning commission?
Yeah, but even then, it becomes a pick and choose type of thing, I, I just wanna eliminate someone saying they're being retaliated against or. They have history and they don't feel that they can get a break, that's why I thought it should come to the in front of the planning commission.
Yeah, I just don't know if they could want on record that they violated whatever provision of, um, the. What are we calling?
It'd only be if they appealed it though, so.
Right.
So they're protesting that they violated anything if they appealed it, right?
Yeah.
Whatever, uh, there's some options, I just don't.
Yeah, maybe, uh, yeah, I, 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 I don't have a dog in this fight, but it could be an individual, like a designated person, I think that would take out the bias. I think that's where you're getting, so we don't have the bias, so there's not a public perception, there's a bias in the process, yeah. That makes sense, um. So, uh, what individual would be, um. Appropriate.
The chair of the planning commission.
I think we have a comment here from the city manager as well.
Yeah. The unmute.
Oh, one moment.
Something to say, actually.
Can he unmute himself?
Can you uh, unmute yourself? You may have an unmute button on your. There you go.
Uh, thank you, first of all, thanks for your hard work on this ordinance. Uh, as far as the appeal goes, we have within the ordinance and other areas where if someone contests the decision of a department. Uh, or a bill, it does go through an appeal process and it does go through me. So I don't think that changing it uh, for this one is appropriate, um. Most of our appeals end up if they really don't like the decision, it goes to the city council. So if we had a, a, someone that didn't like what the planning director has decided, the logical place would be to go to the city manager. The city manager is gonna gather all the information and possibly make the decision to overrule or to confirm. But if it had to go to an appeal process, then the, it's, it should be up to the city manager, uh, in the future. Uh, or now to how to best deal with it. We have code enforcement issues that have an appeal process and it does start with the, goes to the city manager, uh, so I don't think that you should change that.
I said that, I'm sorry, I disagree, you are changing it by making a hearing officer, because this is the zoning code. And the zoning code has an appeal process built in. The appeal processes you're talking about are in the health and safety code, the building code. The other types of codes in the, um, the municipal code, I mean, Aaron can read the, the, the code section, it's. Clearly says that it comes to planning commission, so you are changing it.
Okay, thank you for listening, bye. I'll just, I'll just get out of there because it's not, I'm not here to argue about it, I'm just telling you my opinion that it appears to be a process that way, thank you.
Could you read nineteen point oh four point six oh, Aaron? All right, interested, an interested person may appeal any action that the planning director or planning commission made pursuant to this article to the designated appeal authority listed in table. Nineteen point oh four point one six oh one. Within ten days from the date of the action, actions by the city council are final and no further administrative appeals are available. And so the planning director can be appealed to the planning commission, the planning commission can be appealed to the city council.
So why would we not follow the same?
I, I, that's why I'm recommending we follow the same, I mean, if, if the city manager wants to do something different, propose that to the city council when it get, when the ordinance gets there, but. I think we should stick with the established process for that.
Yeah, how do we, so is it not, so this is veering from the currently established municipal process?
For the, for the zoning code, yes.
Yeah, well, it's a fair, fair point.
But I also recognize Jason's point that some people may want. Less transparency if they have done something wrong, so it could be that you say a revocation could go to, um. To the chair of the planning commission, but if they have denial of permit, that comes to the planning commission, that would be normal. I mean, that, that's another variation, but I prefer just to leave it and let.
Yeah, I, I think if there's already a code describing it, can we just refer to the existing code? Rather than create a, 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 a pro- yeah, process just for this? I think is it similar to other, um, permit?
It's a, it's a permit, right.
From it, yeah. So how, how would we, yeah, how would we go about doing it? If you guys feel that that would be, I think, cause I think that. Essentially the hands stay in the, the city manager, but there's a, a further appeal process in the event the applicant wants to take it further.
So, um, in these changes and the clarification that this is going to run like an administrative use permit. Uh, this is what we have as in the administrative use permit section, upon approval of the administrative use permit, the city. Shall within five business days, um, cause a notice of approval to be served by mail upon the owners of every property within three hundred feet of the boundary of the property that the subject. That is subject of the application, if no further issue comes forward during the ten-day appeal period, the permit is determined valid, valid as per. Section nineteen point zero four point one six zero, which is that appeal period, appeal section. Right, but this is for revocation. Or denial, this is for a denial of a permit, it says it goes to the planning mission. I mean, it's supposed to hear.
Yeah, penalty, a denial, suspension, revocation, basically, we're not allowing something to move ahead, yeah.
So what you could do is you could split it in two, so if, if the person is. Appealing a penalty that was imposed by the code enforcement officer, that could run through code enforcement procedures. But if they get denied having a permit, that's when it should come to the planning commission. To appeal to the planning commission to determine if they should have a permit, you could split it that way. So, and. Review process, not patient for an administrative use permit shall be filed with the planning department in a manner. Prescribed by the planning director with requirement B blah blah blah, the planning director is the approving authority for the administrative use permit, however, the planning director may also refer, I don't know, that's, sorry, that's not what I, I was saying. Oh. I thought it was. Saying that if it was denied. I'm gonna have to just take a whole appeal session out, let the city council put in what they want. Or if I need, not need and need an appeal section if it has other sections that could.
Yeah, cause like if the, if the. Use permit code has the appeal process, we don't, shouldn't really have to reiterate.
Just do that, and then the city council can put it back in if they want something.
Yeah, cause if the permit is denied, that would go through the typical permit appeal process, I, I would agree.
And somebody always has the right to come to planning commission or city council. So you wanna just do that, take out the appeal part?
I would be good with that, because I think in the current code, it deals with denials of permits.
Okay, is that okay with you, Jason? Mel?
That sounds good to me.
All right, so, um, amend my motion to review the nineteen point nine oh point oh seven oh from the draft ordinance. Do, sorry, well, do we wanna take it out completely, or do we want to reference that set the code section? Just take it out completely, like we do in other things, okay?
Yeah, cause it, it's, uh, yeah, it's part of the probably, the permit process already.
Okay.
So, all uncovering, and I think it's probably better.
You know, mm-hmm.
One more after a second.
Do I have a second to, to the amended, uh, the motion with the amendments? Second.
Well, second then.
All right, could we get a roll call vote?
Did we wanna open it to public comments now that we changed it again? So I thought you wanted, I thought you were making changes to the resolution. Right, we're gonna do a separate motion. No, it's, it's the resolution, it's, you dropped the resolution in with the attached draft. So my motion was to amend the draft ordinance, so, and then the motion would be to approve the resolution. So it's one. To adopt the draft amended.
It's two, uh.
Okay, so I think that wasn't a motion, the first thing should, the, the first thing wasn't a motion, it was just going through the changes to the. No, I made a motion, do you want me to withdraw it? I, well, yeah.
If you could withdraw it, then I'll just reiterate, so what we need is. A motion to adopt a resolution of the planning commission. Twenty twenty one oh two of the city of, to make a recommendation to the city council. To adopt the amendments, the title nineteen municipal code. Adding chapter nineteen, nineteen point nine zero, short-term rentals as amended.
But I, but I have changes to the resolution too.
Okay, so let's.
Separate it up.
Uh, it, but it's, yeah, so let's just do it all once, let's make the changes to the resolution, then make one motion.
Okay. So, under the fourth whereas, under the fourth whereas, it says that. So under the fourth whereas, under the fourth whereas, it says that um the planning commission is the appropriate authority to hear and take action on the ordinance and it should say to hear and make recommendations on the proposed ordinance because we can't approve it. We can only recommend approval. Just a fine distinction there. And then, um under A, the second paragraph, I, I disagree that the existing facilities exemption applies to this because it specifically says there's no expansion of use for the properties. And if the city is going to make the case that these short term rentals are not allowed right now, um then allowing them is an expansion of use. And I think the common sense exemption covers it without mentioning the existing facilities exemption. So I'm asking that that portion be stricken. Um. That, that, that was added and um by our secret attorney. So just if, I read that, I mean, I can read it for you. So that's, it, information for the commissioners to all take in.
Yeah, so if, if we're getting advice on counsel to keep that in, I don't know if I would suggest moving that.
Exemption in there because it clearly doesn't apply. Okay, so you can set that to me later. Uh, you, you can ask for all the records request. Actually, it's probably. The planning commission, I don't need a public office request for something. I'll check with our attorney because it may be attorney by a privilege. Okay, so that is pretty interesting. Okay, I mean, any court mo- correspondence between attorneys and is covered under attorney. So I read the existing facilities exemption. It clearly says there, there cannot be an expansion of use. So this is an expansion of use. So I disagree with that, but if you want to leave that in there, um I'll make that point to the city council and then I'm being told that, uh, that I'm not privy to those documents. Um. I, what I said is I would talk, I'll ask our attorney about what documents under attorney by, by a privilege I can distribute. Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear though, if, if you're not comfortable, we shouldn't move forward. Like if, if we're not comfortable with what's here, we shouldn't.
I'm not comfortable with it, but it's, it's, it's on principle. It's not going to affect the outcome. So I'm okay with it.
Yeah, just want to make sure.
Yeah, it's something that I think we need to address much in the future, that we're using the right sequel codes. Um. So I pulled the Orange County City, I mean, the City of Orange, um resolution that was just approved in May. Did you happen to pull that one? Um, I know you pulled a bunch of different ordinances. But we just put that the reason that we're doing this is the short term rentals have been gaining popularity over the last couple of years and that's not really a very robust finding for why we need to regulate, um, that they're gaining popularity. And so, um, what the City of Orange did is they said, um and, and again, it's just a suggestion. It's, uh, if you guys don't want to do it, that's fine, but um, it says the City of Orange recognizes that properly located and regulated lodging establishments designed for transient short term occupancy fill in need for the residents and visitors to Orange, whereas the proliferation of unregulated short term rentals located in residential neighborhoods in the city have resulted in disturbances to the residents of the city, including noise increase and traffic parking problems, litter, it says it trash. Please respond to party complaints and public drug abuse, which may, may not apply to our situation. Whereas, um, all of the above problems have a tendency to deteriorate the family neighborhood characteristics, experience for unregulated short term rentals for public data. And for whereas the recent state above the existence of unregulated short term rentals in cities detrimental to public health, safety and general welfare. Um, whereas the city council finds in our case, planning commission that requiring licensing establishing standards for the operation of short term rental provisions of this ordinance will eliminate the negative impacts associated with such businesses. It just, it just is more substantial findings for why we're trying to regulate.
Yeah, is there a way to kind of, that sounds like a lot of words. Could we condense it to like one or two sentences of maybe?
Oh, yeah, I was just giving example. Um, we could say that, um if, if we added whereas, um, the planning commission recognizes that properly located and regulated lodging establishments designed for transient short term occupancy fill in need for the residents and visitors of Orange. And that, um the existence of unregulated short term rentals in the city could be detrimental to public health, safety and general welfare. Find that licensing and standards for the operation will eliminate these negative impacts along those lines. They could write that on.
Yeah, I, I don't think it material changes the, the proposal here.
It just boosts it in case someone wants to protest. We're being arbitrary and we just, they're popular, so we're going to regulate them.
Yeah, I think that's, I, I have no issue with that. Uh, other commissioners, any issues with those amendments?
And that was it on that. So, um, yeah. Jason, did you have?
Alright, any further discussion now? Alright, so.
No discussion for me.
Alright, let's, um, I think we already went over the amendments to the municipal code. And we were just discussing the amendments. So if you could just summarize, uh, since you were making the original motion, summarize the amendments to the resolution and then we'll proceed with a motion a- after that.
Okay, so, um, so we would be changing the planning commission is the appropriate authority to hear and make recommendations on this proposed ordinance. And then we would be adding findings showing that, um, that there's a reasonable reason why, um planning commission feels that these, um, these, uh, short term rentals need to be regulated as a category, basically.
Excellent. So now I'm going to ask for a, um a motion, uh, from one of the commissioners to adopt a resolution of the planning commission twenty twenty one oh two of the city of Plymouth to make a recommendation to the city council to adopt the amendments to the title nineteen of municipal, municipal code. Adding chapter nineteen point nine zero, short term rentals as amended as we've discussed. Do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Seven.
A roll call vote?
Alright, Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno? Yes. Commissioner Bounce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sullivan is absent. Chair Flackra?
Yes.
A motion passes. Four guesses, zero, no's, one absent.
Alright, look at that. Uh, thanks again to all the public and the commissioners. Great, good dialogue over the last couple of months and nice to get it moved up. Alright, let's go to, um, the next item, seven point, uh, seven point zero and finished business, seven point one to begin uh, discussion and direction regarding mobile vending within the city and possible amendments to the Plymouth Municipal Code, section nineteen point four point oh four oh. Um, we'll have a brief summary, um, take a public comment, hold some discussion and more than likely continue this over. So it looks like it will be one that we'll discuss a couple of times. So, um, let's start with just a summary and then we'll go to public comment.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So, uh over the last year and a half, the city has received, uh, several increase about mobile food vendors. I think they're one gaining popularity and they have been for last ten years or so. And two, because of COVID and indoor dining restrictions. So uh, a few of the restaurants are, one of the restaurants in town opened a mobile vendor, uh, spot and a few others. In town. So we, because our code did not have anything really in place, all we had is a section which is attached about selling merchandise directly from trucks that on the C and K corridor in the downtown historic district and in residential zone. The requirement for that is additional use permit. So, and I think the intent of the code is not food trucks so much, it's, um, other uh, merchandise selling from trucks. So that's why I believe that this is the appropriate time to start up reviewing and addressing this. So like I said, we issued about five temporary use permits for mobile vendors and since the last time we talked about this was, was, I believe in August, we had at least five or people come to this city asking for use permits, temporary permits for this. Majority of those were at farmer's markets or other events. Um, so at the last meeting where we discussed this, we took some information in and I brought it back a little bit differently this time that we did the short term rentals. I brought it back in like draft, draft, draft ordinance form. I appreciate that. Um, because I, as a learning curve for us all, you know, it took us a few extra times to get through short term rentals, uh, which is great discussion. And so I think that that's fine, but doing it this way versus in my notes, what I had from August was to bring back a chart or a matrix. And so I apologize for not following that direction, but I think we will all agree that, yeah, this is I did a lot of the footwork upfront with this instead. So you'll see it's, it's laid out similar to that draft ordinance. We just looked at, um additional things like definitions that we hadn't gone through before. So that's in there. And then some general requirements that we put that, uh, I kind of took from our discussion before what other cities were doing and put those in. So an application process. When they would be allowed, when they wouldn't be allowed. So you have a, uh a backyard barbecue at your house, you bring a taco truck in, it's a cater event. That's an event like that on a private property, they, that person wouldn't be required to have a permit. So there's no money exchanged, no individual money exchanged, the host is paying, that kind of thing. Uh, city events, they wouldn't be required to have an additional, uh, vendor use permit. Everyone would be required to have business license. The, those that are offering food would need their environmental health permit. We would need sales tax reporting, um, and then also some regulations about what will be required for trucks and their operations, when, when they could operate, what they could set up, the cleanup, the insurance, um when it's parked on private property. So you can see that all in here. And then again, because this was the big issue that we were having at farmer's market is the trucks on parking on the street. And so again, making it safe and accessible for people to get to the trucks, but still making it safe for people getting by. Um, and so how, how they would have to be lined up on the street without blocking sidewalks, you know, you would, you would order from the sidewalk side of the truck, that type of things. I also have a little section here at the end, other items to consider, consider, things I didn't put into this draft, draft, draft ordinance. Um, uh, we, that we had talked about and had kind of fleshed out. So again, this is a starting point for this discussion. Next steps for it are, uh, it's similar to the short term rental. We work through this, bring it back as a draft ordinance with a resolution. Because this is a code, uh, municipal code change, it would then go to the city council for the final approval. That final meeting before going to the city council would be a, a notice public hearing like we just did for the short term rentals. So.
Outstanding. Thank you. Uh, let's go ahead and open it up for a public comment. We do have a, uh, audience member, uh, Will Pritchard. Um, go ahead and approach the mic and have at it. Love to hear your, your feedback and commentary.
Good evening, Will. My name is Will Pritchard. I'm the manager and majority owner of Amro Brine Company. Um, I've had those roles ever since I came to this commission back in twenty fourteen, late twenty fourteen. Um, and so we have a city business where uh, mobile food vendors are absolutely integral, uh, to our operation. Uh, they have been since the day we opened. And because of that, when we came, you know, with our administrative use permit application, you know, full disclosure on those plans, they're identified on our drawings, talked about in our, you know, project description. Um, all those things. And, you know, my whole time specifically on food trucks was to be good on that topic forever. Um, because I knew even at that time, there was some past history in the city about food trucks that wasn't necessarily all positive. Um, so I, I really wanted to be completely good on that topic going forward for the long haul. And then we, we've been doing our thing. Basically, we, you know, we have food trucks, we make sure they have their county health permit. Um, strongly advocate that they get their city business license. Um, probably not always a hundred percent on that, but we try to be, um, definitely on the, on the county health, uh, side of things. Um, and we have them three days a week, every week, you know, all year round. So in the city, we're probably unique and then we have essentially a permit already to have them there, um, through that discussion process. Um, so when the temporary use permit process came about, um, I really didn't know anything about it until August. Nobody came to talk to us about it. Um, I didn't have the checklist that's, that's in this guide here. Um, it just really didn't come up until it had already gotten to a point where I think they weren't being issued anymore. So if you had been issued and then the process sort of stopped waiting for, for this exercise to happen. Um, so that's, that's kind of where we're at on the process. Um I would love to see the hard work of the past be honored on this topic, uh, for our business because we were completely above board and forthcoming and proactive on, on, on this topic, you know, and, and we rely heavily on them. And I'm not looking for the city to develop a, a make work exercise for us on, on this topic. Um, we rely on using different food vendors on different days, mixing them up, bringing in new ones from time to time. Featuring different food vendors. So if we have to get a specific permit for every one of those throughout the course of the year, there are these annual permits, are they tied to the food vendor? How long do they last? I really don't need that exercise, having already gone through the administrative use permit process to be good on this topic. You know, as I said, as I understood at the time, essentially forever. Um, so as far as the language of the guidelines, um, all I'm here is great. Um, I would also say that I am totally okay with barriers to entry. I mean, every business, once you've gone through those barriers to entry to be operating, you know, I'm sure restaurants would say the same thing. You don't just want anybody to do whatever all the time. So I understand the need the regulation, um, on this topic. I just want to make sure that um, host properties are carefully considered in this, not just the food trucks themselves. Um, so that, uh I don't know if we would be potentially recognized as having, you know, essentially the permit we need already as a host property. Um, I would love to see that, but there are also situations where you have a food vendor operating completely independently on like a vacant lot. There's the only thing going on there. Like I said, for us, it's accessory to our use. It's fully brought into the use, you know, designed around it. Um, it's not just orphaned down the street. I think the only other business that's really operating like we do, well, the other thing is we directly manage, schedule food vendors. So even in the case where like the taste trailers here on the corner, they're kind of there and not what they want, you know. In our case, we're the ones scheduling them. And I think the only other situation I'm aware of that's like that is the RV Village. They have a, a barbecue vendor that operates. You know, but they also have an underwriting, uh, food, uh establishment there, you know, they have a market. So they can say, okay, well, the barbecue guys are just accessory to, you know, our, our, our food use. Yeah, they're taking money separately as their own vendor, but, you know, they, they have, they have essentially a restaurant already. So I just wanted to speak as to our situation on this, um you know, as, as you go forward and, and, and putting together the, you know, current requirements for the food trucks. Um but specifically on a couple of things, I, I read through this package. Um, making the general provisions for food trucks, it talks about no signage, where actually the the way the T U P covers it and some A frames, I, I thought was better. Um asking for insurance naming the city is, it's kind of going pretty far for a permit. Um, but you know, we get a building permit, you get this and that. I don't, I don't know that a lot of those things have to, you know, maybe identify the city as part of, as part of the, the use permit or something like that. Um, checking up on every food vendor's insurance and it's kind of odd now. Um, unless it's, you know, part of a city event, you know, we're requiring that for everybody that might be there. Now, the overnight parking, we definitely have situations where we'll have a food vendor there, usually for just one night. They may want to bring in the vehicle the day before, leave it that night, get rid of it the next day. I don't know, I don't know. You want to have an outright ban on that. As this being, as being practical and, uh, yeah, settle limit, inner two heights, something like that. Now, when I, when I went through the, the T U P language for the first time, um The other part about the A frame sign, number three, that version amplified sound seems reasonable, if they've got. You know, they've got like a speaker, they call it numbers for orders or something like that, you know, or just low radio. And then the the general provisions or draft language talks about. You know, no lighting hall, but then the T U P talks about, you know, just lighting for safety, I think I think it's better. You know, I I think that no lighting, you're trying to avoid, you know, that sort of semi-permanent installation. Where it's, you know, basically now you've got an outdoor business, it's just, you know, almost fully developed, so you've got some things to do in there. But that's, check one other clips here, you're with me, I'm out of time.
No, go go for it, love the input.
That's it.
Do you mind the questions?
Sure.
All right, any any questions?
Yeah, is there anything in your existing permit that you would, now that you've been using it for a while, that you would change? Regarding just the mobile food vending.
Well, because at the time, there wasn't specific regulation. Really about the food vendors, there's not a whole lot of work for me, I mean, basically, it's on the drawing. Here's where we use mobile food vendors, it's talked about in our project description, it was more of a disclosure thing, everything else.
Better got approved with all that on there.
Yeah, I mean, that was that was part of the discussion, and I initiated that, because I knew there had been some situations with. Taco taco truck or what have you that, you know, heard about, and I and I wanted to avoid any any sort of. Discrepancy discrepancy on things like that, because they are, they're absolutely, you know, critical of what we do up there, so they're they're. I'm not in the food business, happily, I make beer, but they are something our customers absolutely demand. And we and we like to have them there, and we manage them closely, we have good ones. And so, you know, we've been true to what we wanted to do with the food trucks all along. I mean, you know, we haven't really haven't changed from day one. How we use them and how we presented, how we use them to the to the city, so, you know, as far as all that goes.
Yeah, I think your model, model, I think of model business for how they are successful too, so thank you. Any other comments or questions? Is the is the primary concern like, from your perspective? Say you have a, like yours is a business, when you have food trucks operating on the business, is it requiring them to get the. Like to pay a fee, get the permit, or kind of what would be the primary objection to the change?
Well, just, I mean, as I as I read it right now, our situation is really not addressed. It's sort of an app, it's sort of a food truck first process. Versus as as in the case, we're kind of on a vacant lot, you know, out there on our own, and I just. I don't want to see us go through that for a food truck, you know, having having gone through what we've already gone through. It just seems like a make-work exercise in our case, so how, you know, how things evolve. I mean, I don't really have much to specifically object to, you know, the code that's written yet, just kind of weighing in on.
No.
On how ours, since you, I mean, we're we're kind of the, at this point, the old school guy in food trucks in town, so. I guess, I mean, general questions I have is just. What situations is the regulation or the developer regulation trying to avoid? You know, what what would you what would you say no to, or are you just, you know, having the permit process, make sure people be a good guy? And then. City has, you know, a number of vehicles, people have complaints and problems and whatnot, you know, is it just is it just becoming a make-work exercise? You know, it doesn't really even need to be there, so it's. We got complaints from the city about this or that. There's a full process for that, so I just, I, you know. I I think I I think I know a couple of situations that weren't great involving other food trucks, other properties. But how does the code development address those without? You know, they pay the blood to the good guys.
How does it change any current occurrences that could occur? Would putting in a code change that behavior?
There's just, I mean, sometimes, sometimes you just. It's just it's just the way people do business sometimes, you know, some are better than others.
All right, thank you, any any other questions or anything else for us? All right, well, thank you, appreciate the comments.
Yeah, and before you leave, before you leave. I know you've reviewed this proposed. Conditions, municipal code that we've got here, is there anything that would need clarification? In your eyes on the requirements or something, or is it? You understand it versus what you've been doing and this sort of stuff? And is there anything that? You'd like to discuss with the planning commission as to. Maybe it would be better this way or anything of that nature, and I'm just trying to sound out. You're the one person here that's going over reviewing it. Does it look like we've got it pretty well taken care of, or is there something that needs to be worked on?
Well, as I said, I mean, I don't think our specific case is really addressed in the in the in the draft code. I think it's this, it looks to be, it looks to be drafted for the lone food truck at the empty lot sort of situation. We just, we have a unique, so we have a unique situation where we we've done the work years ago, you know, to operate how we operate now. And I can't say really who else can say that, so I just, I'm looking for some acknowledgement of that past work. We also have a pretty much a flawless record on how we've operated, you know, since we opened along those lines, so. I don't know how you address that specifically in the in the in the draft language, but, you know, I'd request something. On the host side, not just not just specifically on the on the food vendor side. And then as far as, you know, specific comments about insurance or lighting or or, you know, A frames as as I kind of mentioned.
Yeah, all right, well, thank you, appreciate it, all right. Um, let's go ahead, and we're probably not gonna get through. Uh, all the detail comments, let's go through maybe some of the subs- like substantial items if those have read through the. The proposal, just to kind of start the discussion, and. To Will's Pritchard's point, I did I did notice that section F, general provision section F about the sandwich signs. It says no signage, I do do feel, you know, some signs are, a couple sandwich signs are appropriate. I think the comments regarding the the insurance in the name of the city. Is that a typical, I just don't know if that's a typical business process, or what why wouldn't we use, they just are required to have. Insurance in their name up to a certain limitation, limit, like insurance limit, I believe that's.
That would be typical if it's on public property, but not on private property, I mean, it's just like you go in to get a building permit. You know, you don't require to put the, or a use permit, you're not required to additionally ensure the city on that use permit, so. I I just assume they put it in the wrong place, that they meant to put it under mobile vending trucks on public. Property, I mean, if you have a public property, you define public property differently than public right of way. Um, to me, that's an unnecessary barrier, it would prevent some people from getting the permits. Depending on their insurance, and they drive their insurance costs up. It's, you know, it's not, it's it's an equity issue. And I think it's unnecessary, it's not going to do the city any good. I I can't imagine someone's going to sue the city over food poisoning if they get it on private property.
Yeah, which which section was the insurance?
It's H under general provisions.
Oh, there it is.
And it's it's saying that they have to name the city on their automobile policy too. I mean, it's just, it again, if you're doing a public project. It's you, you might have to do that if you're hiring a consultant to do public work, or you're doing work at a public park. But to do, to require that for somebody getting a permit on their private property is unusual.
That would be more the private property owner's obligation, right?
Right.
Because then you're responsible as that private property owner liability.
I I think that that should be moved down to. Well, you don't, you define public property, but then you don't have a place for public property parent in here, I assume like if someone wanted to set up at a park.
I think it's a public right of way.
Well, she just she defined it differently though in definitions, she had a definition for public property and definition for public right of way.
Oh, yes, true.
So either it's mobile vending trucks on public property or public right of way.
Yeah, that's true, that's probably a public property or, yeah.
Should I should I go?
Yeah, so that those were one, then another one was. Mobile food, this is vending trucks on public right of way. Item A, mobile vending truck shall be parked directly adjacent to a paved sidewalk. Does this address open ground lots, like gravel lots, or what if it's just like an open lot?
So if it was on the lot, then it wouldn't be in the public right of way.
Okay, so the city doesn't own any public lots where a truck could park?
Uh, so that's where, like, Stephanie brought up the difference between public property and public right of way. So the public right of way is that area, the sidewalk area, but a public lot, you know, the.
Behind the profit plaza.
Is a public property.
Right, if somebody wanted.
Yes, exactly, if we decided to put food trucks there.
I think what they're, what we're, we have, we have regulations for right of way, which are. The ones that are pulling up on the sidewalk or next to the sidewalk, but then the regulate there, it doesn't specifically regulate. The ones that pull into the parking lot of the park, I.
Okay, so do do we need to add that, like add that that part if they park on public property, you know, city property?
It seems like we, they should have some regulation, otherwise there's no regulation on that, that seems to be where you'd have the insurance.
Or or is it covered on mobile vending trucks parking on private property?
No, because they define private property differently.
So maybe it would be just renaming the mobile vending trucks on public and private. Public right of way and public property.
Well, it could be that you just want to handle mobile vending trucks on public property as temporary use permits. Because usually they're going to be associated with a special event, right? Yes, yes, and in this code, it's special events that are. I was ready to see permitted, city permitted special events are not subject to the additional use permit. But there'd still be, we still have our regulations of collecting the insurance, making sure that they have a business license. They would provide that information to the city, they just wouldn't be required to get the additional permit.
Okay, and then my only other comment was on the, it's a kind of prior section, mobile vending license permit requirements. It's item four, it's they need to submit a site plan and business plan. Like, would a mobile food truck have to submit a business, what type of business?
So what I was asking for is like menus or types of food, hours, operations, I thought already on there, that's on there, the hours are on there. Just a little bit about the, what kind of food truck it was, and we were using that information to help publicize them too, so.
I think a business plan is like, where do I go strategically over the next, yeah. Yeah, thinking bank, yeah, that's a good point, so maybe we may want to define that.
Yeah, because I guess it could be under business name and description.
Yeah, because it's kind of, you just want basic information about their operations here.
Or you could say operations plan.
There you go, yeah, operations plan or operations summary or something. And that, those were initially the items I had, but I do agree with Will's Pritchard's comments on. Should there, where would host property businesses fit in this plan, because it's not really private property. And they already, there's already a business approval permit in place, so that's a that's a fair.
Yeah, I think with Amber Brewing, you guys have a use permit, and that's part of, it's part of your use permit. And I I I kind of envision that for, for the easiest way for our host property, I don't. I guess besides RV park, there's not really any other businesses, but there could be.
Copper's Market, for example, have one food truck, they could apply to put more than one food truck out there, whatever.
That's true.
As a host property. So then is that a use permit process for them as the host property or this administrative?
Yes.
Use permit type process for the individual food truck. I I agree that with Will, that there should be a process for businesses that want to. Then have a different business model, you know, that want to provide that, yeah.
So or or is it? Do we have to specifically state that, like, you know, somewhere, yeah?
You could, you could do it either by saying that you're going to have a a different level of permit for. Businesses that want to cycle in, and so they get the, they get a, what do you call that, a master permit. Or you could say that the businesses that have separate use permits are exempt from this ordinance.
Oh, there you go, because they would.
And that people that have food trucks covered under their other permits are exempt from this.
Yeah, we'll put a backup for public comment, well, go ahead.
Yeah, so along those lines, we kind of rereading what's here, that's section B. They have two two categories already, sorry, under the mobile vending license permit requirements, the section B where. It gives you, you know, the exceptions, you have the city events, you have the loan and back, private property, you know, private catering. You could mention businesses, you know, mobile food vendors are specifically addressed to other use permit or. You know, under the code, I mean, as the code develops.
There's a conflict there, because. Um, B two A says mobile vending truck parked entirely on private property is. A vending use permit is not required, but then in the back, it has all these requirements for vending trucks on private property.
But that that two above is for catering purposes, if these are met.
But it doesn't say that, does it?
No mobile vending use permit, we require, and the mobile vending activity is limited to a single.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see that, okay.
And so I'm thinking what you're saying is we would add. Three, saying. Additional permits aren't required for businesses that it's already incorporated into their conditional use permit. That's what you have. Yeah, so you already have this, you've already, yours is already incorporated into it, it might not have the. Detailed list of what, you know, true signs or this and that, but. You know, when a business comes to the city to get these conditional use permits, like you said, you were, you were ahead of it. Showed on your plan, this is where our food truck goes, and that's what we would want to see from all businesses that are hosting food trucks, and then. I I think this, in the city's eyes, there's that you are responsible. For policing your food, policing your food trucks, and there's more on the line for you. If you have food trucks that are not following rules, there's potential impacts for you versus us. Policing one individual food truck that comes to the city one time and then leaves and never comes back, because. They're not doing business here anymore, there's no way to enforce anything.
We definitely get their insurance, because they're there at our invitation, something like that, so. Yeah, and I guess also in the in the exceptions situation. You have like taco truck, your birthday party on the street. It's pretty hard to get those things off the street, especially in Plymouth, because their lots are very small, so I don't know if you want to. Make that the easier.
So could be the mobile vending truck is parked entirely on corporate, on private property, entirely on or adjacent. To the private property holding the event.
Because all, I mean, the situations where I've actually seen that in town, like a birthday party, it's always on the street, it's not.
I I I agree, and I think in there we have a. I, I, I agree, and I think in there we have insurance issues, we need additional insurance, and that, how do we, how do we then? Make sure we get that information before they hold this event, so we're saying they don't need a permit for that, but you'd have to bring your insurance in.
So if you say that's a temporary use permit. Cause these are right, these are permanent use permits you're talking about, ensuring. Not temporary.
Yeah, these are, these are like administrative use permits.
Yeah, oh, I see, so you could, you could allow a temporary use permit for. We'd have to define how to, yeah, like what? Like you said, it could be adjacent to a private.
Right, so.
For a single event. Get, something like gathering or something.
It's, it's probably the, the same amount of cost.
Oh, is it?
So.
A temporary use permit.
Versus an administrative use permit. Just if that, just as.
Yeah, but, but if it's just for a single event, then you know it's not gonna be happening, it's not a recurring thing, if you're having it for a birthday party.
Yeah, I don't think they'll get a, I don't, weren't likely to just get it from there.
Well, if they bring the in and out truck, everybody's.
Yeah, that's right, okay. All right, that's all I had, um, other commissioners' comments? Yeah, go ahead.
They can go first.
No comments.
No?
Any additional?
No comment.
All right, I just, I haven't had a chance to find. Two through this, but, um, I have. So, um, under. Mobile truck vending. Um. Well, you keep talking about mobile truck vendor, mobile truck vending, could you just call it mobile vendors? Rather than having the word truck in there? Um, I mean, I'm thinking. And then it also talks about motorized, you know, in the cities you have these people with the ice cream carts on the back of their bikes running around. Selling ice cream in neighborhoods. That aren't motorized, is your intent to, if somebody showed up with that, to, that as well? Yes, and I need to talk with the city attorney about that, he, there is a, there's a whole other law and regulation of those types of push cart vendors. That type of thing, and that the intent for this code is not, does not have anything to do with that, oh, cause they have their own.
There was, to your point, there was one called the mo- in the definition, mobile truck vendor, maybe we use that as the. The terminology throughout.
Well, down below it says mobile vending use permit, that there's not trucking, but then it says mobile truck.
Yeah, exactly, just kinda.
It's just not consistent.
Yeah, that's a great point, yeah.
So, under, um, the definition of property owner, it, it says property owner shall mean the holder of the title of real property, whether a person, partnership, corporation. Or other entity recognized by law, and I think it should be a period there because. Less these permit is assigned users, successors and interests are not property owners, they may be agents of the property owner. But they're not property owners. Um, so I, I, I think that that needs to be a period there, and maybe put the term agent in there. Um. And then, uh. See, move the insurance requirement just down to public property. Public right of way. And, um.
Quick question, would you wanna? Strike naming the city as an additional insured? Or, I don't know if we have to do that, or?
I, I don't think our insurance will allow that on public property.
I'm just saying move it, cause I'm figuring that that's what she's gonna say. So I figured move it down, I, I think it's unnecessary, but, um. And it, and it's gonna be exclusionary, there's gonna be, you know, the people that. That are operating out of food trucks are operating. At a lower cost point in some cases, um, and it's, it's just an added burden on them.
Yeah, cause I remember having to do this for a wedding, just to rent a hall.
Yeah.
And you had to put the wedding under your own homeowner's liability policy, which was like two hundred bucks or something.
Yeah, it, it's a big deal.
Yeah.
Um, so to me.
Yeah, it seems like an addition.
I mean, if it was on public property, like behind the pop-up class, I can see it, but parking on the road, I mean. We don't require people that park their cars on the road to additionally insure. The city for using the road, that's part of using the road, but. But, but I figure the city's gonna insist, so under John provisions for mobile food trucks. I don't like the idea, um, that times being built in here because. Um, if, depending on what kind of area they're in, for example, if they're in an industrial area, which we hope to have those zonings again. Soon, you know, the work might start at six, so you have a food truck there that's there at five thirty or six in the morning, I think it should be. Determined by the timeframes of the, the area that they're doing, I mean, like if. If the shell station's open at six in the morning, why couldn't a food truck be there at six in the morning? Um, so I, I'd like some thought given to that timeframe. Um, the mobile truck vendor shall not idle vehicle engines more than five minutes during any one time period. Is this realistic, Will? I mean, do some of them have to operate their vehicles in order to operate their equipment inside? Um.
Most have, most have generators, but to me, that's not what this says.
Yeah, this, uh, this almost is like, they don't want the engine running, but it sounds like they could have a generator.
But if they don't have a generator, uh, say the generator run out of gas, if there's some power or whatever, that in order to keep the food safe. They may have to run the engine or no?
Um.
I don't know how that works.
I don't, I don't know any food trucks that, that we've had where. The engine does anything where it drives truck.
Okay, so they're not refrigerated units? Okay, got it.
Maybe it was like if somebody wanted air conditioning, just set in air conditioning, I don't know.
I just remember reading something about somebody that had to run the food truck because they lost their generator, or they lost their electricity.
Hmm, yeah.
You can see that happening in refrigeration.
Yeah.
Definitely. Need, again, the case where you have food truck on empty lot. There's no power pole to go to, they're gonna, it's tear off a track, rock generator.
Generator, okay.
Even in our place. Um, we have. A few.
I don't think you're being recorded up, yeah, sorry, thank you, thanks, Mel.
And it, it's, as far as the, the power for the, um, the food truck or the mobile food vendor, they almost always have to bring their own. Um, even at, even at our place, um, certainly the ones. They're just kind of on an isolated lot, I mean, unless they go through the trouble of putting in temp power, that's, that's its whole own thing. Um, so if you do, I mean, that's, that's. Some engine running is pretty much a given with all. These food vendor guys, cause they, they, uh. Very, some of them managed to figure out with no power, it's actually pretty impressive, but most of them. Choose to have something there to, that, that needs power.
Okay.
So, and again, I mean, this is, this is trying to address food and non-food at the same time.
Yeah.
Um, I was gonna mention. On your earlier comment about terminology, please, mobile food vendor is the phrase that the county health department always uses.
Okay.
Um, so that's. So I mean, as far as sort of tailing with. What you're trying to regulate as released to their world.
Okay.
That's the term. Cause they're not all trucks, I mean, a lot of our guys are not trucks, they have. Their pop-up, you know. So.
Well, you're gonna have, uh, people selling oranges on the corner. Theoretically, too.
Yeah.
Would fall under.
Yeah, the fruit guy.
Yeah.
He's a push cart.
Yeah.
Um. Fireworks guys, I mean, it's, there's, there's a few that come up in town, it's true, but aren't just food.
So let me ask you another question, I put you on the spot a little bit.
Sure.
So when the planning commission last talked about this, a couple of years ago, I was a member of the audience. And there was some concern, um, that they didn't want the food trucks in the, the, um, main street downtown area. Because of competition with the local restaurants, food places.
True.
Do you think that's a viable concern as a business owner, or do you? Um, think it's something that is. Not necessary to discuss?
Honestly, if you don't provide a clear place to eat. Drastically narrowing what you could sell and who your audience is. Um, you'll notice in throughout the county. Tiger trucks, some of them have gone out of their way and had more. Kind of permanent situation with tables. Others don't want people to stick around, it's pretty plainly obvious, so. I, I just, I, I think it depends.
But you don't see it as a competition for your business, for example, to have other food trucks operating in the area?
Well, I mean, I talked to the guys like the Mexican restaurant, uh, they might, um. It's. The ebb and flow that we've seen with food trucks over the last year, which is a lot, I mean, we've. How, how many have we seen come and go just in the last year? Um, food trucks are not a slam dunk by any means, it's, it's a tough little food business. And they have to have very good circumstances for it to work out for them. Um. We get good trucks because we give them the audience and traffic, and they, well, it goes both ways.
Right.
But if you just. Start up on the side of a road. Um, unless you're in an area with a lot, lot of traffic.
Mm-hmm.
And you invest the time to. Build that presence and that consistency of traffic and reliability, you know, like as, as the. Countywide, we have some of those guys, you know, mainly over, you know, Ridge Road and forty-nine.
Right.
Um, and some other, some other tiger trucks, but, uh. And you. And trucks like that seem to serve a very specific need, that is different than the restaurants.
Right.
Some of those trucks actually have both, they have their truck and a brick and mortar.
Mm-hmm.
Cause you usually need a brick and mortar to be your commissary.
Right.
Um. So. People can complain about anything.
Okay.
As you know.
So maybe it's not such a concern.
But, uh. I mean, I think it, it is, I definitely go back to developing these regulations, what exactly are you trying to avoid? What exactly are you trying to prevent from happening, like what? What is the? Situation that you have in mind? You're trying to control. Through this, through this mechanism, versus this, versus just. Be more than know about what's happening.
Individual planning commissioners can have a different agenda than the city does, the city seems to be more focused on, um. Enforcement, making sure that people are paying the taxes they need to, getting business licenses. Um, that make it easy for them to be regulated, uh, for me, I'd like to see it as, um, a service that we're offering to the residents in town. I mean, it's hard for me when I come home late to find something to eat, it'd be nice if there's a food truck around. Um, or to encourage entrepreneurs that are trying to start out in business. To, um, beef up the existing businesses that are in town, or, I mean, prospect sellers, I think relies on food trucks too. You know, there's other places, I, I think it's a, a win-win for the city. Um, and that, that we should have minimal regulations that are only necessary to make sure that, you know, it's not causing negative impacts to the residents.
I agree with you.
Yes, awesome.
But, and I think they're, uh, maybe food trucks are, uh. A good place, very popular, I mean, they're like, when you think of a special events. Me, the first thing you think of for me, property, that. Food trucker. Um, so they have a favorable. Connotation, I think, right now.
Yeah. Well, thanks again for the comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, appreciate that, um.
I have one other question, um, I, I don't know if it's addressed, cause I think those are this, like I said, it's thoroughly, as I hope, um. Do you limit it so the food trucks can't park in residential areas, is it only allowed in commercial areas? Uh, except for special events?
Yes.
Um, because that might be something that we want to.
Yeah, right now it says, uh.
Private property is all zoning districts.
Yeah. Does, there's no limitation to that.
I was thinking when they park on the road and get a temporary use permit, so.
So that all of them.
Or that's an administrative use permit too, it's not temporary.
Maybe legally parked space located adjacent to all zoning districts.
Hmm.
See, I'm thinking that if it's. That you may wanna talk about just having it in commercial industrial zoning. Um, or multi-use zoning, I don't think that would impact anywhere that they already are. Um, but, you know. Do we want them parking up at Hogsview? Does it matter? It might not matter, i- it's just a thought.
No, it's, it's a fair, cause that may help the.
Do you wanna make some?
The point of, like, if some, if temporary use permit, if you have a car, you want a food truck to come. And they, you know.
That would be covered under the special event, right?
Yeah, and then you kind of excluded.
To the public, you want them, you know, to be in the residential areas, um. Because residential areas are gonna be more out of sight too.
Yeah, well. Well, and we did have a plant truck come and sell plants, which I thought was a great idea, I, it's, they just come and. Sell plants.
Where did they, where did, I did, I missed them, where were they?
They were up at Zimt Del Ridge.
Oh, they were.
I, I didn't know, you know, I don't think any of us knew we could have permitted it, but.
And it didn't interrupt anything.
No, it was like, you know, they, can they show up for like three hours and they sell plants for the yard and, and, you know.
All right.
But, but I think something, you know, like that, I, I would be hard pressed to think. That would need a use permit for somebody coming.
Well, they would.
But they would in this case, yeah.
Yeah.
Unless you exclude the residential.
See, I, see, I think that there should be some easy, for somebody that's just passing through, they wanna sell plants for three hours. It should be like a over the counter permit that you come in and pay. Twenty bucks for like a business license, buy a business license, buy a temporary use permit, you get to park here for three hours.
We, we, there's some control over.
Right, there's some control, rather than getting an entire administrative use permit that they have to wait for, because it eliminates that spontaneity.
I, I wonder, maybe we just change, so in our current code, sales from trucks, selling merchandise, we could add. Merchandise, food directly from a truck is prohibited along the Cedar Highway corridor or downtown historic district. And all residential zone districts except with the issuance of a conditional use permit, and we could just change that to an administrative use permit. A temporary use, or probably administrative use permit, and does that just solve our problems right here?
That can. That could solve it.
Sounds like it.
I think that would.
So, okay, let's think through these regulations, so you have yours through your administrative use permit, all right, your, your use permit, all right.
So you definitely want an exception for that.
Yeah, so that would be fine, a business, any new type of business or an existing business that comes in for a conditional use permit. Can add it as part of that permit, so this is, so our highway district or Cedar Highway corridor is called down forty-nine. Um, and then our overweight district are.
Well, wait a second, because remember they were food trucks on that Cedar corridor. In the triangle. Um.
Yes.
For a while, and that was okay. That's part of the Cedar corridors.
So what this is saying is that they needed a conditionallys permit, and that's public hearing, planning commission.
I think that should be administrative.
So that's what I'm saying, do you make it administrative, and then we have, we already kind of have this draft. Of these ordinance, these regulations that, that staff put in place, and we can kind of work through a few of these that will use this.
Do it, like, if they're only gonna show up one time for a couple hours, that there is an over the counter permit as opposed to administrative use permit? That lets them be out there all the time?
Yeah, cause I think the intent is ongoing.
Yes.
Lot, longer term.
That's what we need to regulate, right, but if somebody wants to, I mean, I wish I had known about the, the plant truck. And, um, and, and, and those are opportunities, you know, somebody, somebody might have just, um. Had an event canceled and they have a truckload of floral bouquets or something that they want to offload. There's those kind of, you know, opportunities, it's a win-win because they get to get some of the money back or whatever. To just have a temporary, uh, just an over the counter permit that they could apply for. In addition to getting business license, just to be here, kinda like you do the, um, garage sale permit.
Yeah.
You just say, I want a garage sale permit, I'm gonna do it on this day and.
Yeah.
My ten bucks.
I think that, I think.
That type of permit, we, we need to figure out a very simple application process that could be issued by anyone. Uh, because, you know, in a situation like the, the plant, the bouquets.
Mm-hmm.
They can't apply for the permit on Friday, and then I'll be back here next Thursday, all those bouquets are done.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's different, so they, just so that it can be spontaneous, if, you know. Again, there's a lot of people that are struggling right now with the economy.
Yeah, I think something like that would.
And if they want a permanent presence or a more regular presence, then they go to the administrative.
Which I think is what we're trying to solve for, is that ongoing, can, outside of a host business that's already set up for that.
And so one of the other issues we've been having, and how, just thinking that how we fit this to here is farmer's market. So what happened is I would walk, I would leave work on Thursdays to walk out to a food truck out there.
Mm-hmm.
And be like, guys, you don't have a permit? Do you have a business license, do you have insurance to be parked in the street, so how, who do, who are? Who is responsible then, is that the farmer's market? At the, at the beginning of the season, they come get their permit, and say we will be having food trucks on every farmer's market, or every, whatever, um.
To me, the farmer's market is a comprehensive permit, it's an.
Yeah.
So they should get the permit for everybody that's there and give them flexibility, like just say they're gonna have three food trucks, you don't have to say which ones.
Yeah, yeah, so that would be covered.
Cuz I just want, uh, you know, there's times I went out there and they had public structures in the street and that seemed unsafe and needed to be moved and we needed our sidewalks to be clear so people could get by. Um, and so, that, you know, giving them their conditions for your market here, your conditions for your food trucks. You guys need to make sure that your vendors here are meeting those conditions.
Yes, yeah, another.
I don't know if that goes in here. Under D, cuz I think all this is. Or no, I'm thinking if we just change in the existing code that's here, outdoor sales, sales from trucks.
Oh, yes.
Barring this whole thing away, yeah. Oh, okay.
I see. That could be better, actually.
More information.
Yes.
As, if you're putting on an event, uh, at your property or another property, when we've done the ones, the Italian, if you have two or more food vendors, you must apply to the county, create food organizers permit. Which costs mu, which costs money and you have to identify how your food vendors are. So I'm sure things like farmer's market are doing that. And I don't know if there's a way to at least get feedback from the health department, hey, this is happening here in the city.
So maybe you need to put that on the checklist or if they.
Cuz there's, so that one's, that one's straightforward and they're, and they're, they're pretty adamant about having those. Or, I mean, like, through my, through my wife, who helped organize food truck rallies, fairgrounds, even for something like that, fair itself or picnic in July, those, those all have to have.
What's it called?
Called a food organizers permit.
And that is due to county health.
Any health.
So it's not for uninappropriate areas in the county, it's for.
No, it's every, county by, unincorporated cities. This is just on the, this is just on the, on the county health side.
Right.
Two or more food vendors, you have to have one of these and it's gotta have a map, so everything's gonna be.
So the farmer's market should be getting that already.
Yeah, if they have.
Two or more.
So much for nowhere.
They might qualify a couple ways. I mean, if you have an event, it's multiple days, multiple vendors for, you know, a lot. A food guy and a snow cone guy that are right there, you know, qualifies for it.
Yeah.
So, I bet they're getting that.
Well, they've only been doing one food vendor. Oh, I, at the farmer's market.
So they've been having like a popcorn, snow cone guy and a food truck, yeah.
Okay.
It was, it was getting, uh, it was expanding every week.
Yeah. Is it more than two or two? No?
Two or more.
Oh, yeah.
But I think that the, I think just that having a farmer's market is also a county health thing. Cuz you have, you know, produce, food for sale, not just, not just prepared, but all kinds of stuff, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway, that's what I know about. Food organizer permit.
Yeah. So you're, you're saying, Aaron, ma- maybe we just modify the existing.
Yes.
Code to be a little more specific.
Yeah, I think so. And then, uh, if we make it an administrative use permit, it will go through administratively and, but we still take some time to look at what those um standard conditions of approval that I will put on, on them, that where it makes sense.
Could you still do an over-the-counter thing for a single event thing?
We need to think about how that would work. Um, and not that I ever would encourage people to do things without the appropriate approval. But when you're driving through town and on a Saturday and you stop for two hours and then you drive away, um.
It could be as simple as, you know, when you go into the state park, you drop your money in an envelope, you guys have a drop box, just have it be known that they need to draw a permit or something, I don't know. If it's concerning to you, but.
And again, trying to, what's, so what is our, what is our purpose?
We wanna encourage business opportunities in a, in a uh regulated fashion so that it's not impactful to the residents.
I think the, and it's, in this specific case, it's like, we're really saying, longer term, if you wanna.
That's the big.
Camp here, there's, there's ru- rules, right? If, if it's a single event, it's more than likely it's a birthday party or it's a single, you know, residential event or something. That, I don't think that's the issue we're trying to control.
Right.
Or regulate.
I mean, we could just say that those are even exempt if they have a food truck at a special event once a year or something.
Or is defined in the current code, it's probably, it's probably already.
Strikeout version of the code for the next meeting?
Yeah, it's pretty simple. Okay. I mean, we, it's just one, one just D with um adding merchandise or food, or do we change that? Selling, okay, so sales from trucks, period, selling merchandise.
Sales from vehicles, it, 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 just mobile sales.
Okay.
Mobile sales, yeah. Cuz it could be a truck or trailer, yeah.
Mobile sales, period. Selling merchandise and or consumables, food?
Yeah, however, that's typically said.
Merchandise or food, because I think the definition of merchandise didn't include food, right?
Selling, vending, supplying, or providing of food, drinks, or other consumables and or goods or merchandise.
So those definitions are not in our code currently, so we can't rely on those definitions.
You can add those.
We, I mean, we can add that to our definition section.
Yeah, mo- mobile, mobile vending. Yeah, cuz that could be a lot easier.
Than all of this.
So add definition.
And some of them are redundant, you know, like it defines what a business license is, so there's only a handful of ones.
So the definition we'd add is mo- mobile vendor. So when we enter definitions, it's listed as mobile truck vendor, will strike truck, will be mobile vendor. Show me a person or entity that sells, buys, or provides food, drinks, or any other materials and or goods or merchandise from a vehicle, truck, or trailer.
Yes.
So the workaround on that is you have to drop you off on a corner and there's no vehicle there.
Which, that's in Sacramento, actually.
So instead of sales from trucks, it's gonna be mobile vendor, is that? Selling merchandise and or food directly from a truck is prohibited within the scenic highway corridor and downtown historic overlay district and within all residential zone districts except with the issuance of a administrative use permit. Um, so that's what we need to figure out, how we take truck out of there. So this is, everyone has a copy of this as an attachment, it's out here.
Oh, yeah.
Titled nineteen zoning and it's D, D is what we're striking through and, and uh, applying.
So you're gonna remove the word trucks and just put the vehicles?
Mobile, mobile.
Mobile vendor, so where it says sales from trucks, that's gonna be mobile vendors.
Okay.
Um, and then selling merchandise and or food directly from a uh, let's see, what do we call that here? Mobile vending?
It, does this say that it's prohibited within highway scenic corridor and downtown historic? Period? And then does residential need the conditional use permit? You can't get a conditional use permit for highway scenic downtown historic?
No, it's all three of those is you can only do it with this uh permit.
Okay. It's the, it's kind of a wonky phrase. It should say within the highway scenic corridor, comma, downtown historic overlay district, comma, and within all residential districts.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it has, yeah, it has that. So prohibited within the scenic highway corridor district, comma, strike and downtown historic overlay district and.
But I don't think the downtown historic overlay district needs a conditional use permit, why can't that be added?
So we're changing them all to add in these permits, yeah.
Yeah.
So, and then, I think take it within out? And all the residential zoning districts?
Oh, yes, yeah, that's, cuz that's essentially all residential zoning districts, yeah.
So the, the figuring out is truck, what word we use instead of truck?
Wasn't, isn't that the mobile, that's mobile vendor?
Mobile vendor, I guess.
Yeah.
So selling merchandise and or food directly from a mobile vendor?
Cuz we've defined that.
Uh-huh.
She has, she has a mobile.
Selling merchandise as a mobile vendor.
As a mobile vendor is prohibited within the highway scenic corridor district, comma, downtown historic overlay district, comma, and all residential zone zoning districts except with the issuance of an administrative use permit.
Yes.
That was simple.
All the time you would have said on, save on that. Figure out the right. We did, we just took a long way to get there.
Another public.
Do you know if we're in one of those districts?
You are. You are in the, um, you are the, you're right here, you are in the scenic corridor overlay district.
That's what I thought.
But they have an admin.
Yeah, but you already have it, yeah.
I was just curious. Cuz I think when we came to, actually when we came to planning commission, it wasn't for the administrative use permit, we had major disciple.
Yeah. So, again, and also just to be clear, no one is gonna be able to, yeah.
Design reviews from historic downtown area, they don't have a design review in the scenic, do they?
Uh, design review for like certain levels, uh, buildings of certain size or different, yeah.
So who's, who's, who's because of the work. What, what we're doing on that particular work.
Okay, so one thing to consider, uh, if we look at, oh, you're, this is very small, zoning that. What, does it, does it, does it not include any areas in the city where we think it's appropriate? So highway, we obviously understand what a highway is, the downtown, which is um not the whole downtown, but it's mostly surrounded by residential around, so allow residential zones. One spot where it wouldn't allow is, um. What is that? There's this, what word is that? There's a little, there's a few, like these pink spots right off the highway that aren't adjacent to the highway, wouldn't be allowed in that. I don't know what those are though. Those. It's like between courts and then a main road that's not made. This.
Did the property for something.
I mean, I, I can't see that, I said that's where it painted.
You are right here.
Probably a separate.
It was suburban commercial. So like, um, the market is on the highway, so that is covered there.
So bit, so this is saying it's prohibited in these areas, so it's not prohibited in those, not the, the area is not ident.
Oh, that's true, it would be, they wouldn't need a, they would need a permit.
Correct, yeah.
So this is, this is the way to protect our mo- more vulnerable areas where you don't want food trucks lined up all the way down the highway. You don't want them in front of every brick and mortar business because you might be able to also support brick and mortar businesses or have a, a, a healthy diet to be taken to.
But I don't think there's any area that would not be covered by admin use permit then.
There are a few little.
Probably like little pockets or.
Right off of the highway, that's not.
Hopefully, yes.
It's in the area that's supposed to be industrial, right? Isn't that the area that's supposed to be industrial?
This is like, yeah, that's a bad mining property.
Yeah.
It's the mining property.
Yeah.
Off the south of the city street. And that's where they wanna zone it back to commercial industrial, so it would be appropriate to be able to have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so I think, well, I don't think we need a mo, we're just basically gonna continue the conversation.
So, and that, so that, are you ready then next steps for me to notice this as a public hearing? Draft the ordinance changes, draft the resolution to bring back to do like we just did for the.
Can I make a suggestion? Doing a public hearing for each of these can be expensive because you have to notice everything. Is there, and, and there's no hurry on this, right? Is, are there other things that you want to work on in the code that we could consolidate? We could go over those and consolidate them all into one public hearing in a few months?
Yeah, and that, and that makes a lot of money cheaper too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there's any, yeah, great, great sense of words to use for this stuff. So do you need a, a motion to con, to just continue this or what?
I understand the desires of those.
We need a motion, close public hearing, right? Or do we wanna continue some?
I don't think we need to continue the public hearing. I think the commission has provided enough direction to understand where this is headed. So, um, we just close the public hearing if it is not already closed. And I have direction from the commission on how to proceed with this and we will bring it back as a package with other different um additional ordinance changes. And we'll, we'll, we'll check in, you know, if we're, we're six months down the road, we still haven't found something else to add to this, maybe we'll.
Cuz they can still get temporary use permits if they need it.
Yeah, and from what I, like, most of the food trucks have kind of packed up on there. I know Taste did.
Okay.
Um, the Pogerville one, he has pulled his permit, got it, that permit's gone. And Will's business is not in any kind of, okay.
Alright, so we'll close public hearing, we'll continue further discussion at a later date. Alright, um, let's go through any, um, any final, um, agenda items, so do we have any staff, additional staff presentations?
No, I just wanted to check in real quick about holiday schedule and if we thought that, uh, if people are gonna be, if they knew their the sixteenth, I know is not super close to Christmas, but some people that was a meeting that we wanted to or, or we think that is.
When is, um, you had told us that the project on the corner down there is gonna be.
Yeah, so we're still working on that.
It's kidding, so that can be ready by the summer, I don't wanna hold that up if it's.
We're, we're, I mean, it, there's, there's a decent amount of staff work that goes into it, the applicant had asked for more time too. So, um, I would have to go back and kind of see where we are in staff, since it's a public hearing notice also, so those dates uh, everything moves up for our public hearing notice date, so there's a chance it won't be ready by then.
So I, if, I think if, I would say let's not have a meeting unless something comes up that would necessitate uh, an agenda item, then we conduct the meeting.
Um, can I add something to the list of codes to maybe review? I, I'd love to take a look at cottage industry type things for people to be able to sell their own produce or eggs or whatnot. Um, they, they do have regulations in other towns to, to allow that. I can send you a draft ordinance.
Cottage industry?
It's cottage industry type selling, so like, say I have a bunch of tomatoes and I can sell extra tomatoes.
Like a farm stand, like a personal farm stand?
It allows people to generate a little bit more income and it's fairly, um, you know, it's just a small over-the-counter permit. I think the one I saw was like twenty dollars you get to, you know, you sell extra eggs, if you have chickens. Cause how, how's the chicken thing? That go to the city council?
No, we still have, we still brought it back for, um. For discussion.
Does that have to go through the public hearing too?
Yeah, and again, it's, um. I like.
Sure.
But a make work.
Make work exercise.
A make work exercise, so I think. We, Bill, um, and I will continue to talk about that and what's supposed to program if it is. Out, because we aren't getting any complaints about it, we have had, I, I have yet in my three years been here to have a single question.
Right, but I like for, my issue is I don't want only the people that don't care about the rules to be getting to do it. So if chickens aren't allowed in town. Then only the people that don't, you know, don't know about the rules, who don't care about the rules, have chickens, and somebody that wants chickens, that wants to follow the rules may not. Be able to do that, so I just, that's the only thing.
And I think we had talked about actually having the planning commission, if, if, if they wanted us to pursue that, similar to some of these, to. Give us direction, and then they only went.
Well, they did, the city council did give direction.
Um, I.
A year ago.
I think we had, oh, shoot, I know, it's been a while since we looked at this, but I think we had. Talked about having the city.
So, I, I remember at the city council a few years ago gave direction on animal hazard treat product, projects, which was different than that. Right, but I think, if I remember right, but I could be remembering wrong, I think Council McLeifelter or, um, Council. Council member Burns, um. Also said they wanted to address the, the chicken issue at the same time. It came up because of the forage.
Yeah.
But it may be that's something, uh, the other city manager and I bring back as a, like, uh, update to the.
Yeah, I think maybe like a report out to see if they, if we need to, I, except I think there was never a discussion, is there a need, it was more of, let's talk about it. Um, but if, if you could do that, take it to the council, and then if they felt there was a pursuant need, we could certainly.
Yeah.
Maybe use that as the next.
Yeah, so it's just not pending out there that we're not being sponsored.
Yeah, good points. Alright, any other commissioners' reports?
Uh, I just wanted to say I think it's coming up time for when they're gonna do a planning mission training, isn't it in January, February usually? Um, it's March, March, so I just.
The week one?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, make sure that everybody had the opportunity to attend that. If they want to.
So League of Calgary Cities will hold a planning commissioners academy in March of twenty-two, two thousand. Next year. That, so.
Okay.
So if we could tell, I don't know the date, but we'll get more information out when we get back.
Yeah, and I think it builds up, so maybe, unless it's quite soon, maybe we could get the information early.
Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and close the, uh, city of Plymouth Planning Commission meeting for November eighteenth at nine o'clock PM, adjourned.
Thank you.